We'll start as we always do with a moment of silence. Reflect on all the things that are going on in this world. There are some wonderful things, there are some good things. And I'm hoping that eventually the good things overshadow the struggles. So we just keep moving forward. Moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you all. Let's call the meeting to order. Who's doing the roll call?
I'll try.
Okay, we can hear you and we can see you.
All right, Councilor O'Trulli, are you still on or did we lose you?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Okay, yep, I gotcha. All right, Councilor Fender. Gotcha. Councilor Paulson.
Here.
And Councilor Moore.
Here.
And I think we have Shawna and Shawna's gonna be late and I think Councilor Pla said he wasn't gonna make it.
No, he's not gonna be here at all. So hopefully Shawna will join us at some point. Okay, sounds good. We don't have any minutes to approve, so we'll move right into a presentation from the wonderful organization of TBFNR, State of the District. We always look forward to hearing from you guys. You are just so wonderful and we love what you do for us on an ongoing basis. So how are you, Laura?
I'm very good. Now I'm blushing though, so thank you very much. That's very kind of you saying.
But you deserve all the accolades you get and then some.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, thank you.
Well, you have the floor and thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you. All right, here we go. Stand by while I do a little screen sharing.
Okay, and you can formally introduce yourself with name and title and all that good stuff.
Absolutely. Let's swap here. Is everybody seeing the main presentation and not the slide notes? Thumbs up?
No, we see the main presentation, I do.
Fabulous. Thank you again for having me this evening. Again, my name is Deputy Chief Laura Hitt. I have been with Wallerton Valley Fire and Rescue for nineteen years now. It's been an exciting ride and right now I'm part of my career that I am in. I oversee our organizational health division, which includes our human resources department, behavioral health services, and occupational health and wellness. I also oversee our logistics division, which includes facilities maintenance department, fleet maintenance, and supply. And then I also oversee our business strategy department, which manages public records, our HIPAA administration and medical records, as well as incident and deployment and staffing analysis and GIS analysis. So I really enjoy all of those departments and it's been a lot of fun being with TBFNR. I just have a quick presentation to share some information with you of what occurred in 2020 and some highlights of where we're headed in 2021. We cannot have a presentation without COVID, right? So it's been a year. And so immediately we launched a COVID-19 task force in our organization. There were so much information coming in, so many questions, and so many changes. We really needed to step up to make sure that we were able to continue to maintain and provide the service level that our communities expect during this troubling time. That occurred in March of 2020. We implemented new protocols for our response personnel, as well as prevention protocols for all staff. We closed our facilities to the public in March to help slow the spread and our facilities are still closed to the public unfortunately. Our nonessential staff, like many of you, converted to a telework environment and we are still primarily in a telework environment still at this point. And we did our best to communicate compassionately, as you can see on that screen, with what was somewhat startling when we would show up to incidents in our hazardous materials type suits and SCBA to help protect and treat our citizens. I think one of our firefighters commented that he felt like a Ghostbuster when he gets the full garb on. So that has been challenging, but our crews have been doing an amazing job, very resilient through this process. It is, it is a heavy load, as I'm sure you all experienced, but we've been really supported by our communities. Our supply chains early on in the pandemic, you know, even as our own personal supply chain with toilet paper and necessities were extremely strained. This is a picture of one of the donations that we received from a local school district when we needed goggles and they supplied us with science goggles. And it was amazing how much that even though it was so hard early on in the pandemic to see our community really step up, we had businesses that were providing us truckloads of PPE and it was humbling at that time to see the community come together to help us. Community outreach, it remains so important to us even during the pandemic, although it is much more difficult with closed public facilities. And so we've tried to do as much as we can to meet and see our citizens outside of just 911 calls, which have included birthday drive-bys and some graduation drive-bys. But we are really looking forward to joining the many events that occur in our district and in King City specifically, once we all have another opportunity to get back together. We are also supporting the vaccination effort. And so we started, we are a vaccine distributor and we began administering vaccinations in late December, early January, and we continue to do so. We're supporting the counties, both in Washington, Clackamas, and portions of Yamhill County in our vaccination efforts and we plan to continue to do so for the coming months. And to date, our staff have administered over forty-two thousand vaccinations in our community. Last year, we also had a heck of a wildfire season. You recall the tragic fires that occurred in September, even in our own communities? At that time, we fought our largest wildfire in our district on Chehalis Mountain, along with other wind-driven event fires that occurred in our area. We were able to save all of the homes on Chehalis Mountain and everyone was evacuated safely. We also sent crews over to Clackamas County to help in the conflagrations that were occurring and the fires that were occurring in their areas. And then additionally, as we continued through the months in October, we helped Cal Fire with their August, they called it the August Complex Fire that was occurring in the Mendocino National Forest and we sent crews down there to support those efforts as well. Here is the call volume for the city of King City as of 2020. There was an increase of only twenty calls compared to prior year in 2019. There's a graph right down here in the corner to look at the five-year incident count for the city. District-wide, we were actually trending upward early on in the year. A little bit higher call volume rate than in 2019. However, that quickly leveled out and in a couple of months reduced as soon as the pandemic hit around that April time period. And the stay-at-home order was issued, we believe, with people staying home, maybe some hesitancy to call 911 and also even reduce traffic out on the roads. Did result in a reduction of our call volume overall in the district, actually by a 2.6% decrease from the year prior. And also, whoops, excuse me, we did have a little blip in September, as I mentioned earlier, with the September wildfires that occurred, but overall, we tended to trend downward compared to the prior year. We have been able to move forward with some capital improvement projects last year and then moving into this year. So what this is, this is the picture of the inside of our supply warehouse in our new logistic services building. We call it the Logistics Services Center or LSC. It houses our supply facilities, fleet, and communications department. We were, we had these services located out in Aloha in our North Operating Center campus, but that campus has been sold to Washington County. And so we relocated down into Toowallaton, which is a bit more of a centralized location in the district since our stations are stretched far and wide. But this new facility is seismically resilient. It's really gonna help us improve our workflows and efficiencies in the logistics division with all of our staff now located in a singular location. And what you don't see in this picture, it's pretty amazing when you walk through these back doors, this door back here, or on the other side, excuse me, we have three bays that are three engines deep. And so it's pretty amazing to walk in that bay and see a huge engine up on a lift being worked on. So even I continue to be impressed by the apparatus and equipment that we have. But it's been really exciting to have this new facility for our logistics personnel. We are also working on opening a station in the Charbonneau area, which is that south area of Wilsonville, south of the river. We've had a bit of a hard time locating land to purchase in that area. It's a smaller area. So we're just dependent on land opening up. But in the interim, what we're gonna do is we're entering into a lease agreement in this building right here. It's located off of I-5 and Miley. And we are actually leasing the space right here in this middle area and are currently working on remodeling it to meet a fire station requirement. It will be staffed with a two-person rescue and we do plan to be able to move in in the next two months. We're gonna be calling this Station 54. And we are recruiting. So we are currently recruiting for our next firefighter and paramedic academy. We have held two virtual events to answer questions for those that are interested. And for anybody that may have missed those events, they are recorded and available to anybody that needs access. If you go to tbfnr.com, right on our homepage, there's a careers button that you can hit. And we really line out the process for what it takes and the steps that are required to either become a paramedic or a firefighter. And there's also some videos on there. This is Jen Turner right here. She did a great promotional video for us for our recruitment and this is available on our social media account. Recommend that you take a look at it if you'd like. It's also available on tbfnr.com, just to give people a sense of what it's like to be a firefighter or paramedic with Toowallaton Valley Fire. We also have this year implemented an interactive burn map. So at our reception desk, that is one of the highest call volume types of calls that we receive is can I burn today or what is the burn information for my particular area? Then we serve approximately 390 square miles. And with this interactive map, an individual can enter their address up here in this box and it'll zoom them right to their location and they're able to click on the areas of the map and get the specific open burn information for their particular area. If they don't know their address, it's again with an interactive map, you can zoom, pan, do whatever you need to to get to a particular area. So that has been a benefit, we believe, for our public. And it is also available, tbfr.com. There's a residents and business tab and you're just looking for open burn. And as we round out the presentation, moving forward, our voters will see a ballot measure on their November ballot for a TBFNR bond. It will not be an increase, so no increase to voters. Our current rate is approximately fourteen point one cents per one thousand assessed value. And the projects that we're looking to fund in this particular bond are focused in four areas. Some improvements to our training center, which is located in the Sherwood area. Approximately about ten stations that we are looking at remodeling. There's some seismic upgrades that we still need to work on on some of our stations so that when that earthquake does hit, that our firefighters will be safe and then they will be able to respond. We're also looking at some security improvements, as well as remodeling our stations from a more inclusive work environment. And what I mean by that is the stations, fire stations of the future, will not have separate men's locker rooms and women's locker rooms like they have today. Or in many of our stations, there are shared bunk rooms where there might be two bunks in a room, pony, with a pony wall in between the two of them. What we're gonna look at moving forward is specific private sleeping quarters, as well as private showering and bathroom areas, so that everybody has a safe space where they can use and feel supported and also that they're not in these open areas or segregated off from each other. And so we don't quite know what that will look like. We're looking at some of the other fire departments that have moved into this different type of area like Clackamas Fire. And it'll be a little bit different for each of our projects because all of our stations have a little bit of a different design, but that is definitely one of the things that we're looking forward to. And Station 35, the King City Fire Station, is one of the stations we have slated for a remodel. That station in particular is older and it definitely does need some seismic improvements, as well as a reworking to ensure that it's meeting those inclusive quarters that we're looking for. There is still one piece of land that we are looking to purchase in the next coming years in that Charbonneau area. And then also, we have a capital plan for our apparatus funding. And so the bond is gonna help support the capital replacement plan that we have for our larger apparatus. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, it's more of a comment than anything else. That was a great presentation. Really appreciate it. You know, there's so many good things going on and improvements. But you know, in the future, you know, we're still very much interested. We have an idea that we will have some land available as we expand in our UGB for a potential station out there. So don't forget that we are still very much interested in joining forces with you to make that happen. And I see Mike Weston is smiling because he knows that's what we really wanna do.
Yes, and we are very excited about that as well. And on maps that we have, we have our light gray circle over there called Station 31, where we're also looking forward to that day where we can open up another station in that area and work with you on that. So we're super excited for the work that you're doing in the city and being a part of that.
All right, that sounds wonderful. So do we have any questions from anyone else? Questions, comments?
Hi, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, hey Kate.
Hi. Hi Laura, thank you so much for the presentation. You mentioned that the bond wasn't an increase. Is it just a bond renewal then, is what we're looking at?
I don't know if we call it a bond renewal and we had a blast set of bonds that the voters approved was in 2006 and those bonds are coming off of the rolls. And so this would be a bond that is set at the same rate as that starts to de-escalate.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Don't be shy.
No questions. I just wanted to just thank you for all that you do. You know, we love our TBFR here in King City, so that was a good presentation and I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jamie. Anyone else?
I think I saw a chat. Is your new Wilsonville station going to have the new living facility? Yes, so that Station 54 that I was talking about that we're working on in the Charbonneau area, that's gonna be our first station. That station has a suite-style layout. And I believe that's more in line with what Clackamas Fire did, where it will be a sleeping corridor attached with a locker room and a shower all in one. And so we'll have individual suites. So it'll have two suites and then a third suite for shift changes. They're coming in in the morning. So they also have a place to shower and change. So that'll be our first stab at the new inclusive work environment that we're putting together.
That sounds good. Smart, did you have something?
Yes, I may. I just wanna say thank you also. Great sacrifices from your past and your team, putting your lives on the line for us and responding as quickly as you can to calls and things like that. I think this is a very good presentation and really appreciate you doing that tonight. And I think a great deal of interaction with the community and everything that you do. Thank you, I appreciate it all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate being here.
Okay. Anyone else? Well?
I have one. He says you guys are awesome with the COVID logistics at the Nike Campus. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Absolutely, and that's where our daughter got her first shot.
Oh, good.
Nike Campus, so she was raving about how efficient it was, so.
Good, that's great to hear.
Okay, sounds good. So with that being said, Laura, do you have anything else you wanna add? You're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting, but if you don't, we understand.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I probably will drop off. I do have a little bit of work that I wanna do before I head home tonight, but thank you so much for the invitation. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.
With us, okay?
Good night.
All right, thank you. Good night. Okay, let's move on. Let's see, I'm trying to get my full screen back here.
We've got open forum.
Yes.
And I think there was a gentleman named Brian who stopped by our office earlier this week who asked if he could talk. If he's on, now's your time, Brian.
And we were expecting David.
Yeah, he is, he is sitting here.
Okay, all right, so we have at least two that are going to speak. So we can go with Brian first, that'd be just fine.
Is he here? I don't see him.
I don't see him, Brian.
So I think we move on to David and then I think Gretchen also had.
And Gretchen, yes, that is true. Okay, David, are you there?
I am here, but I fall under the ladies first. I don't know if that's still allowed or not, so I would yield my time to Gretchen.
I appreciate that very much. Gretchen is a part of the team. She's always been part of the team. So I don't think she'd be bothered at all having you go first.
Oh, okay, all right. Just wanted to throw that out there first.
I appreciate that very much. Introduce us to yourself and let us know your full name and what you're trying to accomplish here.
Perfect. So my name is David Haymes and I am currently an assistant principal in the Newburgh School District. I am running for position one for the Tiger Toowallaton School Board. I want to thank Mayor Gibson for allowing me the opportunity to be here, Kate Moore and Jamie Fender for endorsing me as well. As part of the, as my campaign progresses, you know, I've been picking up other endorsements and happy to announce that Mayor Gibson has graciously accepted to endorse me, so thank you so much for that. You know, it's great to be here because I don't really get to connect with a lot of our King City constituents or future constituents. And it's, you know, great to finally get out here. I'm running for position one of the Tiger Toowallaton School Boards, like I said. And one of the reasons that I'm really running for school board is that I believe that all of our students deserve to have the best education possible. And some of those things include being seen and represented. Also include having access to technical careers, which, you know, right now, everybody is on the hype train about college and everything and that's great. But also, we need to have the trades be brought back into schools and we need to have, you know, everybody that wants to be in the unions and the Pipe Federacy Union and Engineering and all of that. We need to bring all those things back into our schools. So that's one of the things that we can all work on together. I do want to, you know, acknowledge the, what happened yesterday with the conviction of Derek Chauvin and how that translates into our students. Mainly our students of color to feeling, you know, safer in schools and having, you know, maybe examining our relationships with our SROs and just, you know, having, having all of that be brought out and having more input from our students so that we can get those relationships, you know, reestablished and reexamine and make them better. Because right now, some of our students don't feel safe around police officers. And so we need to make sure that we get all of that where they're heard and where they are, where those relationships are reexamined. And, you know, to tell you the truth, I know that a lot of you might not have students in the district, right? But your taxes are paying for where we're going. And so you guys are valuable assets to our district. And so we need to also listen to what you all have to say because your taxes are paying for education. And, and having, having that responsibility on my shoulders, I greatly accept it. And I would hope that you would also feel confident in reaching out to me so that I can be that bridge for you all. Because I know that, you know, there's single, single people out there. There's people that don't have kids. There's people who are, you know, retired and they don't, they don't have kids in the, in the school. So why would they vote? Why would they, why would they do, why would they be involved? But, you know, we really need everybody to be involved in our education because we need to create, you know, productive members of society. And with your help, we will definitely do that.
Okay, that sounds good. And I was remiss in not telling you that we have three minutes per person in this forum. But it's wonderful. I do want to open it up to see if there are any questions from any other council members that they wanna ask of you or just any comments. Jamie?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. Thank you for, for coming. It's nice to see you and talk to you here. And, you know, I, I really appreciate your comments about inclusivity and ensuring that all of our students feel safe. You know, we have Deer Creek Elementary here in King City, which everyone thinks is tigered, but it's not. It's a King City school. And my kids go, well, one kid goes, the second one shortly will follow. But, you know, one thing that we really pride ourselves is that our police department really have a a philosophy that they really don't want kids, you know, or individuals' first experience to be terrifying or in an emergency or in a, you know, in a tragic situation. And so I just love the interaction of our police department with the elementary school to really help foster and build the relationship early on with our kids so that it can, right, start building trust and work on, on all of that. Anyway, it's a loaded topic, but I just wanted to kind of mention that. And so we just welcome you and are excited to have you run.
Yes, thank you for that. And yeah, I mean, you know, we're definitely not anti-police. We all, we need, we need police officers and there's several police officers, I mean, mostly all of them that are, you know, wonderful members of society, right? And it's just a matter of how do we ensure that our students are feeling safe around them? And that's, that, you know, introducing them into the community, introducing them into, to our students, to our families, that's a, that's a really good start. But at the same time, I'm not sure how, how much we need to have police patrolling the school grounds on, you know, on a daily basis, right? When, when the staff is there that needs to be there to keep everybody safe.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we want to ensure as well that our, you know, that our BIOPIC students, right, have the exact same experience as our white students, right? I mean, that's, that's at the end of the day and so, anyway, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
That's what it's all about. And, you know, I get excited when I hear about trying to have a school system that offers more options for students in terms of careers. You know, that's a lot of passion for that. I think it's important. College is wonderful and the college experience is wonderful, but it's not for everybody. So we need to really start looking for ways that we can give children a lot more options in the trades and at least set the tone that there's a possibility of having a wonderful career and livelihood in the trades. And I think that's gonna be very important moving forward. So what we wanna wrap up, but it is very important, what we've just done here for you to be now visible to everybody and to have a formal introduction. So we know a little bit more about you and we appreciate that very much. Before we close you out, are there any other comments from anyone else?
I have a question.
Who's that?
Heather Wakem.
Okay, Heather.
I just wanted to make sure I understand. Was your opinion that you prefer to have school resource officers in the school or to not have school resource officers at the schools?
Yeah, my opinion is that we should not have school resources, resource officers in campus. And that is because until we are able to reexamine that relationship and reintroduce them, you know, as, as part of, you know, making sure that our students feel safe around them, then, then we, then we can see about bringing them back. But right now, most of our BIPOC students, that's our black indigenous people of color, you know, they, they are not, they don't feel safe. But let me tell you, as soon as we just, you know, as soon as we're able to get everybody on board and make sure that they feel safe, you know, obviously. Uh, police officers are a great part of our society, right? And 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 we need them. Because when we're in trouble, who do we call? We always call the police, right? And so that's why we need to have. Those relationships reestablished and and re, um. You know, just redone, right?
Or do you also not want to have specialized officers for like? DHS referrals or child abuse cases, or is the idea that those, those issues would just be referred to patrol in general?
You know, well, we would have, we, we have those relationships already established and each. Uh, each school knows how to, uh, who to call and how to. Address those. What I am referring to is, um, officers that are, you know, in uniform. Uh, patrolling the campus. Uh, I'm just saying that we should not. Have them right now, but definitely once we've reestablished those relationships and once we. Make sure that everybody feels safe, then we can, uh, relook at them.
Okay. And I'm sorry, just my last question. And since you do work in education, it sounds like you have a lot of experience in education, which is awesome for somebody that's running for this position. Do you have an idea on like a timeline of what that would be? Or do you have like a? System or any, an idea of how you would reestablish those bonds?
We've definitely been working on.
I don't want to cut you guys off, but, you know, I don't know if we can spend this time. I, it would imagine that you guys can hook up. And have a conversation, uh, because.
I would, I would actually love to, um, if you could. Share your information with me or go to my Facebook page. I'll put it on here. And then that way we can, uh. Talk about that and talk about, uh, what my plan is for that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And it's important. That's exactly why we do this, so that we can establish that connection. So that, uh, there will be further dialogues or everybody really understands, uh, where, what positions we are in on all of these different issues. Okay?
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Um, this is Gretchen. If David could send you his email address. And it could get forwarded to me, I would like to get in contact with him.
Okay. Uh, you're gonna post it on the, uh. Yes. Okay. It'll get posted. It'll be available. Okay, David, thank you so much for being with us. I appreciate it. Heather and everybody else, thank you for the questions.
Thank you so much.
Important issues, okay? So, uh, let's move forward. Uh, Gretchen, you're up.
Yeah, um, just really quick couple of announcements, Ray, uh, CCI stuff. Um, we just heard a presentation last night on Washington County's, um, land use. Uh, work program for, uh, transportation and and land use. Um, and. There were questions raised about. Why they weren't immediately working on updating their website because it's almost impossible to use. And. Responses to issues that had been brought up by CCI. And if any of you are interested in the issues specifically, including how we coordinate with cities. As the county, which is also an issue. Um, the meeting was recorded. It'll be available on the CCI, uh, Facebook page. You can, you can listen to the entire meeting.
Gretchen, uh, for those of us who may not know what that acronym is, what is CCI?
It is the Coordinated Committee for all of the CPOs. And each CPO can have two representatives. Of citizen participation organization and, uh, can have two representatives to CCI. At which is an advisory committee to the, uh, county commissioners.
Okay, alright.
Okay, person, uh, from my comment is. As follows, you and I, Mister Mayor, had a conversation about the need to do some charter review. And, uh, we talked vaguely about maybe having something ready for the tw- twenty twenty-two election. Um, if we are going to do that, it's really time to set up. And get that process going. It's something that could be working while. The council is completing the master plan and be ready to come back with a report to the council. Um, in early, sometime in early two thousand twenty-two. Uh, so that the council would have the opportunity, if it so desires, to put that on the November ballot in. Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
I wanted to raise that issue. I, I think this would be very timely to get this going.
Okay, I appreciate that Gretchen and it is on our radar. And we will get it done. Okay?
So, and I would be glad to participate, help.
Okay, appreciate the offer.
Thank you very much.
Any comments related to what Gretchen just talked about? Okay, Gretchen, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, uh, we don't have any unfinished. Well, first of all, is there anybody else I, I wanted to speak in open forum? Uh, the fellow that you were talking about, Mike, never did, do you mind?
Okay. If there's anybody else that would like to join in, go ahead and please unmute yourself and let the mayor know that you are ready to speak. Going once. Going twice. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Okay, uh, no unfinished business, so we're gonna go right into new business. Uh, seven point one, discuss and consider the appointment to the budget committee. And we have Lori Petrie, Adam Moore, and Heather Waken.
Ronnie, how many positions do we have available?
Three.
Three? Alright, perfect.
We have three available and three candidates.
Three available and three candidates, yep.
Uh, let's think about this, let's see what we should do. I, I think we're gonna be good. So, um.
So I don't know if you guys want to introduce, because I, I know Kate Moore, but I do not know Adam Moore.
Uh, 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 Kate, do you know who that person is?
Seems familiar. I think I met him about fifteen, sixteen years ago.
The most important thing to know about, um, Adam Moore is that he bid on the. First position of the walk and roll parade at the Deer Creek Elementary, uh. Auction and was, uh, in fact, placed in the parade in front of the mayor. So, uh, you know. Many, many a year ago now, but.
He's trying to get on right now. Actually, he said he's having a hard time to get on the Zoom. So, keep an eye out, Ronnie.
Okay, I, I'll keep an eye out. And, um, I also, uh, Mister Mayor, sorry to interrupt, uh, Viva posted on here that. She wanted to invite everyone to the King City Business Roundtable Tuesday, April twenty-seventh at noon.
Okay.
So I wanted to get that out there. And also. Uh, Councilor Thomas or Thompson is available.
Yes, I see that. Welcome, Shauna. Thank you for joining us. Appreciate it. Okay, so.
Sorry, I was late.
Shauna, did you say something?
I just said, sorry.
Oh, okay. Uh, no problem at all. Uh, thank you for joining us. I have every bit of confidence that you were. Okay, so we have, uh, three candidates for three positions. And I think what we need is that's all, all of you candidates understand what you're getting yourself into, what this is really all about. Do you need an explanation, uh, that defines what this is at all? Okay, we don't hear Adam and I see Heather says, I know what's going on. It's all cool. And of course Lori has been there before. So, um. We just need a motion to say that we accept all three of them.
I am gonna, I am gonna move because I'm very excited that Heather Wakem never gave up, continued, continued on. And I'm very happy. Lori Petrie is back for more. I love it. This is so exciting. So I proudly. Proudly nominate, uh, all three, Heather Wakem, Lori Petrie, and Adam Moore to King City Budget Committee.
I second the motion.
Alright, all in favor say aye. You can raise your hand and. Uh, we can hear you, unmute yourself. Mike, do you want to do a head count?
I've got Ken and Jamie so far. I've got Micah. Uh, Kate and Smart, they're smart. Kate looks frozen on mine and Shauna, I can't see yours.
Actually, uh.
I got Kate.
Shauna, hand up on the screen.
Shauna's hands up on the screen.
Uh, hand up icon.
I think that's everybody.
Okay, uh, what were you saying, Ronnie?
Yeah, um, actually, can I have a revote? Uh, Kate Moore, you should be not voting. On this particular issue.
Oh, that's right.
I will abstain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hate your vote doesn't count.
Alright, so one more time, everybody show hands. I've got Ken, Jamie, Micah, Kate's abstaining. Shauna had a thumbs up, but it's not there right now.
Yeah, I can't see it either, but.
Okay.
Yeah, her hands up.
Alright, Smart, I can't see you. There you go. Alright, gotcha.
Okay.
Alright, so that's everyone.
Okay, and I just want to say thank you to every one of you. Heather, your persistence is unparalleled. There's no doubt about it. I appreciate, uh, you joining us, uh, for this, uh, particular part of the business. And, uh, is that Adam? Adam, I don't think we've ever met. Hi, Adam Moore, can you hear me?
I think that. Can, I think his speakers aren't working. Still no sound, he says.
Okay.
Wave.
Adam, okay. Alright. Either that, he's just ignoring me and I'm used to that. So it's, it's okay. So.
To the, to the newly budget, uh, members of the committee, budget committee, just put on your calendar, uh, May. Twelfth at nine thirty, there is a budget committee meeting.
AM or PM?
AM.
Okay, okay. We can do AM.
Do you think Adam can hear this?
It's not until May nineteenth, right, Ronnie? And everyone should get a packet before it happens.
No, it's, I have it on the calendar for. Hold on, let me double check.
I think it's May nineteen. But everyone will get a packet at least a week ahead of time. So should have plenty of time to go through all the. The packet, the financials, so.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, thank you guys once again. I appreciate it's an important part of the business and we truly appreciate. Your volunteering for this, uh, opportunity. Uh, so with that being said, uh, we can move on to, unless there are any other questions or concerns, any other comments? Okay, let's move on to seven point two, uh, master plan update. And who do we have the pleasure of doing that?
So just briefly, I'm not gonna go and do a deep dive on this, uh. Where we're at right now is we're just going through some alternative works on what our street network is gonna look like, crossings are gonna look like. Uh, mute Heather.
Yeah.
So, uh, we are going through, uh, kind of like what our intersection distances are gonna be, um. What pathways and roads, what kind of features we want in our town center. All those elements are kind of coming into play right now in a number of ways. Uh, we do have a tour on Friday. Um, Mister Russell, Greg Russell, who's actually on the, the Zoom meeting today. Has, uh, volunteered to kind of take us on a tour of some of the areas along with, uh, a few of the property owners, Mike Myers, Michael Halloran. Uh, Mister, uh, Harold, um, I can't remember what his first name is right now. Uh, I think it's Chuck Carroll. Um, they've all, uh, volunteered to host us, uh, in and around their property on Friday. So, um, right now, I think we're pretty much full. We have a bunch of people from the SAC and the TAC going. But we really, because of COVID, we only had about twelve spaces. So, um, really limited. So thank you for the. Uh, kind of stepping out those that have already taken the tour and allowing those that haven't to join in. But that's the update on master plan, really.
And I just want to say, Greg, thank you for, uh, doing this. It's important pulling people, people together to. Uh, really better understand what's going on out there. Okay, so thank you so much. Any questions or concerns from any, uh, one from the council? Comments? Okay, we'll move forward to seven point three, uh, discussion on gas tax.
So the letters have gone out to the, uh, gas station owners. To, uh, kind of make them aware of what we're considering. And essentially, um, when we look at the numbers, we get. Roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in gas tax revenues from the state of Oregon. That's enough to do approximately three to four projects per year. And we've got kind of a backlog of projects that could easily surmount like or surpass, you know. One point five to two million dollars and, and backlog of projects. So, um, our objective of gas taxes is to put it out there. And see if we can't get a gas tax going on the two gas stations within the city or any gas station in future in the city. To give us an alternative source of revenue to start paying for some of these street repairs in and throughout the city. Um, we're also talking about setting aside a portion for, uh, like sidewalk repair, like a sidewalk grant or something to that effect. For people that might be financially constrained and not able to pay for the sidewalks in front of their houses. So, we've been working with Peter Watts, our attorney, Ronnie Smith here on the call, and, uh, the mayor. And, uh, I think Micah and Jamie have been on as well. Oh, yeah, Mike, Mike and Kate, sorry. Um, but, uh, sorry, Kate. And, uh, so we've been kind of discussing and trying to figure out a way that we can put this together. And so we're pretty. Um, I think we're getting to the point now where we're about to start messaging and putting stuff out and. Um, getting people moving, hopefully, on putting together a ballot measure for a gas tax and putting information out on the streets. So people understand what it's gonna actually benefit. Um, the, we do have concerns, uh, because there's a lot going on right now. Between the TSP and the master plan and the code amendments with the House Bill two thousand one and two thousand and three and. We really don't want to mix our messages and it's a personal concern of mine that we're gonna put this out and it's gonna get mixed. Messaged and people are gonna say that, you know, we're using this to pay for streets in the new area and that's simply not the, the truth. Um, this is something that we've needed for some time, um, something that we've tried to pass before. Um, we're just readdressing it and seeing if we can get some of this going. So, um. Anyways, well, we should have some more messaging coming out here in the near future. Um, stay tuned, I guess, would be the next step.
And, and that's an important part of the committee, uh, that includes Kate and Micah and, and me. Uh, to, and Peter Watts, I mean, and Peter is very instrumental in trying to help us pull together. The kind of wording that we need in a survey that needs to go out, say, for instance, uh, to talk about this. And I commend Mike and Ronnie for getting the letters out to the two gas station owners. Uh, from what I understand, we have not heard back from the owner of Space Age, but we did hear back. From the owner of Arco who said she is willing to sit down and talk to us. However, she said that, uh, this is the third try at a gas tax, but, and she opposed all three. So, but she didn't say, she did say she's willing to discuss it. That's an important step. So we just need to better understand what her concerns are and why, uh, she doesn't feel that she can support. Uh, something like this. And I'm hoping that we can get that same kind of conversation, uh, with the owner of, uh, Space Age. But if the owners of those gas stations can't support it. I think as a team, we need to be able to discuss that, to be able to talk to it and understand why they don't support it. Those kind of questions are gonna come up. And if all, uh, many of you might remember, when the last time we tried this. The owner of the, uh, Space Age gas station posted signs stating, vote no. So people need to understand what their positions are and that's all we're trying to do is better understand their position on this. But it's of, is of great benefit, uh, to overall King City. Uh, especially when you look at the volume of drivers, uh. Uh especially when you look at the volume of drivers uh who do not live in King City and purchase gas at those gas stations. Some of them are using our roads uh to go through, but many of them are traveling up and down ninety-nine. So we need to just have a very strategic approach to this, which I think we're going to be able to achieve this time. We're gonna really uh try to uh uh get more information out. And to be able to talk to it intelligently about, about what the uh pros and cons are of a gas tax. And what the impact will be to the residents if uh this gas tax does become reality. How much is it gonna cost you? But what's the benefit, you know? And I think in this case, the benefits by far outweighs uh the impact in terms of what it's gonna cost you as a driver. So uh we're going down that path and, but I do want to hear uh from the council on what your thoughts are and uh what your concerns might be on this.
I think, uh Mike, I'll wait, I, I have a couple of comments. I'll wait until after you. Go ahead.
I was just going to uh reiterate what the mayor had said there. It's like, the gas tax allows us to bring money in from folks that aren't necessarily in King City, that don't necessarily live in King City, but they use our roads. And so that's the difference between doing like a vehicle registration tax or just cause then it would be just the people inside King City that would be taxed for those roads. And everybody else in the area or region would be using our roads. So at least the gas tax is more fair in that aspect. At least that's how I see it.
I agree, Mike.
Is the timing, um is, is this for November ballot?
Yes, we're, we're shooting for November.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I'm very, I'm just very concerned with the. I mean, I think we're always gonna have our naysayers. That's not gonna be, right? I mean, there's just always gonna be that, that can, the contrarian contention, but I, I think that it, the way that we do our messaging is just gonna be so important because I, I agree with Mike. I think it's gonna be hijacked and it's gonna be associated with the expansion. And we know how much false information has been circulated by that kind of board group already. So I think we just need to be really clear and concise. And unified. I mean, I think we have to, we have to have a clear messaging that all of us come together and really understand and can disseminate at every point when the, the fake news gets, gets thrown around, right?
Yeah, no, you're right.
But I, I mean, I agree. I mean, I think it completely, you know, we, we, people need to understand that if they want, if they want the roads and sidewalks fixed, it has to be paid for and.
That's right.
Right?
And, and you know, one of the important points to this conversation that Peter Watts has made is what, how the ballot measure reads. You know, so building up to that, yes, we need to get information out. The ballot measure needs to be at a level where it is not confusing, that it is very specific in nature. And the way Peter explained it to us is that it needs to be at a fifth or sixth grade, sixth grade level. You know, and that's not trying to be mean or nasty or anything, but it needs to be simplified to the point where people can see it. This is what it is, this is what it means, this is what the uh benefit will be, this is what the.
You should not have to go to your, you should not have to go to the ballot booklet to decipher what it is in order to vote for it. You should be able to understand what you're voting for simply on the statement of the ballot.
That's right. And that's what Peter has been, is driving toward. And uh he's going to work with us to develop that language. And I know Kate and Micah have been uh involved in this from the very beginning and Kate and Micah have been very clear on how important that is. And not only that, the survey that we put out about this has to be as uh simplified and specific as it can be about what it is we're trying to do and what those funds will be used for. That is so important. So, but I think we can accomplish this time because we didn't do what we're talking about doing this time when we had it on the ballot the last time.
And I, I think we should all, once we have this all buttoned up and done, I think we should each take a HOA and go do a good presentation with questions and lots of, you know, I, I think that would be great.
Okay, uh so Kate, Micah, anybody else?
No, I think you summed it up pretty well.
Okay, uh from the counselors who are not part of this uh team, Smart and Shawna. Any questions or concerns?
Ken, can I just mention, reiterate one thing that Mike said? Um I, because I don't live in KCCA, I might not know um how badly some of the areas need to be repaired there. And what I've learned as um, you know, being part of the council is that the work that needs to be done is very quickly outpacing our revenue. And so I think that's part of something that we really need to be clear on as we're explaining how this doesn't have to do with urban growth. This, these problems would exist exclusive of that anyway, so.
Exactly right. And, and it's important because the, the uh expansionary, there's gonna all be new streets. That's, that's, and that's a whole nother bucket of money. That is not about this. This is about trying to maintain streets that need the repair. Uh even for Edgewater and the newer areas that we live in, they aren't there yet. You know, but there are some sidewalk issues that we may be able to contribute uh and support uh the residents to repair. But the KCCA, the Highlands, the older areas are the ones that need this repair uh to get them back up to grade. And then uh eventually it's gonna have to happen in Edgewater and the other areas too, so.
And as, it's not gonna be in any of our, you know, uh the surveys or, or in the, the letters so much, but as we've talked about, and there's a backup of projects that is, what is it, twenty twenty-five that we're at? Before uh we're gonna be able to get to those. So that's, and that's. Twenty twenty-nine, yeah. So when we're talking to people individually, I mean, that's, that's a big part of this is that, you know, with our current funds and the current revenues that come from the state for this purpose, we're, we're that far behind already and the list is only gonna continue to grow. So I mean, if anybody has any comments or questions about the, the new expansionary, that, that's where.
Absolutely, you're, you're spot on. So uh with that being said, um we're gonna move forward and we will continue to give updates and hopefully, I, uh Mike or Ronnie, do you uh, we're gonna meet tomorrow, correct? No, Friday, Friday, excuse me, this, uh Wednesday. So Friday, we're gonna meet again and we're gonna talk some more about the survey. And uh since the letters have already gone out to the two gas station owners, we'll talk about that a little bit more. But the focus in the next meeting is basically gonna be on the survey and trying to get that part of it going with the help of Peter Watts.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Well, uh that's all I have on that one. Uh we'll close it out if there aren't any questions or concerns. Um move on to seven point four, resolution R twenty twenty-one dash oh two allowing a supplemental budget.
So, are you ready for this? So um.
I'm ready.
Mike Mars, our accountant, has decided that we need to write off uh some of these debts, so. Um it's essentially like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're basically eating in, in adjustment. So while it looked like budget-wise we were doing well. Uh now we're gonna end up writing off two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was sitting in contingency or was associated with uh court fees and fines that have never been collected. It's the one-time big hit that really kinda hurts our financial position in my eyes anyways. I mean, technically, that's just paper money or it's imaginary money until it actually hits our bank account, but um you know, our assets definitely take a hit when we lose two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of potential revenue, so. Um that's the big thing that you'll see in here. Uh other elements are gonna be the uh, all the park expenses from the drainage system and the ball field and all that have come through. And uh have all happened within the last fiscal year. So you see that adjustment to the uh park SDC as well. So those were the two big ones. Uh other than that, the vehicle outlay for the police vehicles, which was part of the last supplemental budget, I believe. Um those are also captured here as well. Um any other like, was there any concerns or questions that maybe I can discuss with you? Uh we were able to successfully submit our uh CARES Act psyche grant and we'll get reimbursed for that. So nice job, Councilor Fender, and those that put in time to make sure that's a success.
What was that dollar amount?
What's that?
What was that dollar amount?
Forty-seven thousand.
Okay, alright.
So, well done on that one.
Good job, guys. Appreciate it.
And it looks like we're looking at a few dates in June to do the artwork. Um we might be stationed at the community park or we might be at City Hall if things uh, if, if risk levels decrease by then, maybe?
We'll be at the park.
Alright.
Yeah.
Right. Um but anyways, we need a, a resolution, I need a motion to uh move forward with this, so.
Uh just a quick question, how, are, have we not had collection action on the court fees and such because we haven't had the staff and the manpower to do the collection actions or are they, are these debts that are just non-collectible?
These are the deaths that were uh exhausted by our um.
Not really. Ronnie, let me, let me just chime in here. Yes, no. Um they were kinda past the statute of limitations for collection, but our judge, Judge Looby extended that statute. But our accountant, Mike, Mike Mars, like, well, we need to write this off and get it off the books.
Okay.
So from his standpoint, he's just like, we need to get it off the books. If we collect any of it, that's great, that's fine. We can still collect on those fees or fines, but at this point in time, we can't really count on that revenue for coming.
Got it. Okay, that, that clarifies, I, yeah. It's a bit, that's a big chunk to not, to abandon collection actions, right? So.
Right. Well, and next year, he's thinking it's probably gonna be closer to eighty to a hundred thousand. So like just figuring on writing off eighty to a hundred thousand a year is a little painful, so.
Yeah.
Mike, how, that two hundred and fifty, how? What length of time, I guess, does that represent? Is it the past cup? I know that it's, some are probably older than the rest, but is that?
Yeah, it's the ones that are over uh the seven years old of age. So they're aged accounts that are over seven.
Okay, that, that's pretty old. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so uh let me ask a question, Mike, and I know that this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to figure out. Now all of you know that under the ARP, the uh relief uh act uh where we're gonna be receiving uh almost nine hundred thousand dollars uh from the federal government. It goes through the state first. And then uh to us. All of these things that we're talking about, we, we're trying to figure out, and I know Mike has been working on this. How we work this into the budget issues that we have today? And what are we gonna be able to spend that, those funds on? You know, that's a big chunk of money. You hear a lot of conversation about what they expect us to do. We're gonna have to register uh so that we can receive these funds. There's a process that is related to that. Uh and there are these principles that they want us to apply to this, uh dedicated grants. Uh asset needs, physical priorities. And uh they want to make sure that we advertise and celebrate the spending of some of that money and include our legislators when we come out with uh something that we're gonna spend it on, hit within the community and so on. So there's a lot to this that we need to try to understand. And uh I don't think we have any fear of wasting this nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh that is not the concern. The concern is uh to clearly understand, to get to the point where we all can agree that these are the priorities for spending that money. Do we think we'll be prepared to have more conversation, in-depth conversation about this when we do budget? Is that the appropriate time to do it? Or is it an executive meeting that's separate from the budget? We, all of these questions and concerns need to be answered.
I just don't think we're gonna know anything um by next month, you know? Um the way this thing is rolling through US Treasury and State Treasury, um it's just, we don't even know yet. Um it seems pretty obvious to us, there was four things listed in the bill, you know, and those four things, it's we don't have, we don't necessarily do a lot of broadband around here. We might be the best broadband in the world. There was premium pay, there was broadband, there was uh some water infrastructure, things of that nature. There was, there wasn't much in the bill to, that allows us to spend it on, so. Um there's like grants for, I think you could do grants for like essential employees or businesses that had essential employees, like uh say like Grocery Outlet, whose employees were working through the, the thing, our essential workers with our police department or it's in the office. Um you have uh, who else, who else, the banks, maybe? The, I'm just trying to think of what the other.
You could use it to supplement the money that's been lost for city revenue, like hotel tax or you know, alcohol tax, that sort of thing. That was, that's the other thing you're missing.
Right. Okay, well, we're gonna have to get to it. We're gonna have to figure this out, so. Um and, and for us, because of the size of our city. Uh the cities that are fifty thousand uh population and over, that money is going directly to the city. Maybe some of the cities have already received it, I don't know for sure. But for us, it's coming through the state and then to us because of the size of our city. So ours is a little more complex, but Mike, I sent you uh an NLC uh presentation. They've been having these regular meetings that kinda talk, trying to talk about the more detailed information. And there was just one more that happened and I sent that to you. I haven't had a chance to review it yet.
I saw this morning when I was reviewing my emails.
Okay, alright. So we're gonna stay after it and we're gonna try to figure out how we, I mean, it's a, it's a wonderful amount of money. We wanna do it right. We wanna uh take advantage of this very, very unique opportunity. And the other thing about uh King City is that, you know, a lot of cities were really devastated in terms of the loss of revenue and all of those things that are COVID-related. We weren't really hit that hard, but you know, and that's a blessing in itself. We all understand that. But we still have opportunity now. I don't know if I said that clearly, but.
We've, we've definitely seen, we've definitely taken a hit, you know, on a few things.
Right.
Um our marijuana, yeah, but then, you know, luckily our marijuana and liquor stuff has pulled us right through.
Cool.
So, but um, yeah, I mean, we've definitely taken, yeah.
We, we need, we need ninety-nine and Fisher.
Right, we do.
Yeah, 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 you're right.
There was, I don't know if you, if anyone drove past it yesterday, there was a line around the entire block for four twenty, so. Let's, let's get, let's get that block uh by next four twenty.
Yeah, okay, we'll work on that, cause I, no, seriously, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity.
Totally.
That in, you know, that's revenue, okay? So, okay, so we don't have the answers, but I want you guys to know that we have gotta get to that, okay? We have got some work. And look, there's so many things going on with the UGB and all these things that Mike and Ronnie and Ernie and the rest of the staff uh are, are working on. Uh so I, I commend you guys once again for all the hard work and accomplishments that you make. And this is just another layer that has to be dealt with, okay? So, uh with that being said, we need. So with that being said, we need a, did we do a motion and second on this?
We haven't yet. We need a motion to pass resolution twenty one zero two.
I moved to approve resolution twenty one forty two?
No. Twenty one dash O two.
There we go.
We have a motion in a second from Counselor Moore. Was that right?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, let's show a hands and.
I've got Ken, Jamie, Smart. Kate.
You can use your voice if you like.
Shawna, Micah, are you there? There's Micah. Alright, gotcha. Six oh, thank you.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, with that being said, let's go around the horn. And Ernie, you're up.
Okay, so I'll, I'll get out of the way real quick here. There was a statement that the Washington County Law Enforcement Council put out yesterday. I know Jamie shared it on her site.
I saw it too, yeah, yeah.
And I'll, I'll have Ronnie put that up on the website. That just speaks to, I'll let it speak for itself and we'll kinda move on from there. But there was a statement that was put out by us chiefs and the sheriff. And then on to other business, we were supposed to have the drug turn-in day this Saturday, the twenty fourth. And unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to do that due to staffing issues, due to the training, vacation. Got somebody that got deployed on kind of emergent orders, so we're down staff. We're not able to staff or keep a police officer in sight the whole time during that collection, which is required by the DEA. So we're gonna have to scrap that while obviously post some alternate locations where they'll be able to go turn their medication in. That is close to, there doesn't have to be at a police department. There are some pharmacies that are closed that have a, that have drop sites that are onsite all the time. And so we'll have that posted for people that do stop by. And actually, that's about it. I don't, Mike, unless I'm missing anything, I'm just gonna kinda step out of the way and let him go.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Quick question. Um, did the body cam purchase and all that, did we get all that in and?
So Axon is always in a hurry to have me sit in on their stuff and then they're never in a hurry to finalize what we're looking at, but it's still in the pipeline. And so it's something that, yes, we are still gonna do. Just how, we just haven't done it yet. We haven't actually signed a contract or, you know, because it basically just come down to five-year agreements and it's gonna be, you know, somewhere, I think, I think we said, what did we say, north of thirty five thousand for a five-year contract and so. But it's not been finalized yet. Hopefully we'll know a little bit more next month.
Thank you.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you, Ernie. Mike?
I don't have much to say really. We had a meeting with Steve Voss earlier this week with three J. We had a meeting last week with Marcy and her team, Marcy Keith, SC, SCJ, and the traffic team over there talking about intersection spacing and street profiles, what they look like, where it's gonna be, how it connects, how it's. Other than that, we had a meeting with Columbia Land Trust last, I wanna say last week. Relatively unproductive. They have their position, which is not our position. They are not willing to work with us. They want us to reroute our entire system and leave them completely alone. Simply put, we can't do that. So we're at odds with them. We will be at odds with them, it seems. And I don't see us improving any relationships with their negotiation team. So seems like their attorney is just looking for a potential payout and trying to get the maximum value that he can. And their staff isn't, is just trying to keep us out of there. So nothing good to report there, I'm afraid. And I'm thinking it's probably gonna be a battle and drug-out battle at that. So. So goes, other than that, we have other things going on, looking at the TSP on pathways, trails, how we can do smart autonomous options, also adding in electric vehicles, the electric options there. I think we have our tack meeting coming up here for the transportation system plan, as well as a, you're gonna have public outreach again coming out in mid-May for the TSP. And hopefully that public outreach, they'll have some alternatives to lay on the table that we can put out to the public and what those alternatives cost and what's practical and what's not practical. So other than that, we're trying to coordinate our messaging with JLA and three J, as well as ourselves with the gas tax potential coming up. So really concerned about our messaging and trying not to send mixed messages, but that's about it. I'm gonna keep it short, so.
Okay, Mike. Thank you very much. I'll keep it short as well. Just a comment on the Chauvin conviction. It is good to see that the judicial system worked in this case to do the right thing. Like Ernie, who signed on with the rest of the police chiefs and the sheriff to put out a statement. I will be joining in with the Metropolitan Mayor's to do the same. That letter is being finalized and should be out no later than Friday on our position on all of this. You know, we keep having conversations about policing. We have an outstanding community police force who care about people. And there aren't any concerns about how we interact and who we interact with, with our, in our community. And our police force is to be commended for what they do on an ongoing basis. As I've said all along, and I think this is the way it has to play out from here on, and Ernie and I have talked about this a lot, is that our stance is if we have an issue within the policing, we have officers who aren't complying with the standards that we set, it is a leadership problem if that continues. We will not let those kinds of things continue or fester within our police department at all. And that's out of respect for the leadership team and out of respect for the officers who come in here every day and do what they are supposed to do. So I have no concerns at this point and they shouldn't have any concerns about us supporting them when they're right. But they also shouldn't have any doubt what our position is gonna be if they cross the line and prove to us that they don't deserve to police our community. That's just how simple it is. I don't know how we can say it any differently than that. So this is progress, but there's still a whole lot going on out there in terms of policing. So thank you, Ernie, for you and your team and you guys stay safe. And I understand that Friday, Washington County is going on a higher alert in terms of COVID restrictions. Have you guys heard that? Anybody?
Yeah, going back to, to high risk.
High risk.
What does that mean for us? Do we have to, once again, start making some changes in the community park? Do we have to take down the hoop again? Or what does that mean to us?
You know, we were at high risk for quite some time. It's the extreme high risk that we had to shut everything down. So we should be pretty good. We haven't really, the moderate risk allows higher occupancy within buildings and things. The high risk reduces occupancy to, I wanna say it's like twenty five or fifty percent.
Okay.
Twenty five, twenty five.
Okay, so in far as the City Hall and staff, no change there, correct?
What's that?
City Hall staff and the way we operate on a daily basis at City Hall, no change there, correct?
Yeah, no change.
Okay, alright. Okay, and the numbers are kinda crazy. I think I saw an eight hundred number today. You know, so, you know, we're not out of the woods and I know people are getting vaccinated and I'm glad I got mine done. So we'll just see, you know, because you're vaccinated doesn't mean you stop doing everything that we were doing before. And that's what we all like to understand, that we still have to follow protocol and protect ourselves and those around us. So listen, you guys, good to see you all. And been enjoying this beautiful weather. I understand the rain is gonna return next week. So let's be prepared. This was just a teaser, okay? And I wanna thank you guys for all that you do for this community. It's wonderful, okay? So unless you guys are just wanna hang out, we do need a motion to adjourn. Oh, everybody is silent. No one.
You know, Ken, I love hanging out, so I don't wanna move to adjourn today. I have more to talk about.
I moved to adjourn.
Aw, man.
Aw, come on, Mike.
Second.
Boo.
No commentary on, on the company, which is fantastic. It's more that I didn't eat lunch today, so I'm looking forward to dinner.
Yeah, I know you are.
Mike's motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye, or show a hand. Okay. Alright, you guys. Thank you so much.
Nice to see you all. You too, Gretchen.
Gretchen.
Hey, Garwin.
Hey, Mike. Mike, I was at the water, but I press a meeting. I'll get with you and Ronnie later.
Okay, fair enough, Smart. Thank you for coming in and signing that letter.
Yeah, yeah, thank, we'll put it up together. Thank you.
Sorry, Smart.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
I gotta work on, I don't, I'm not sure I'm getting all my assignment emails. I need to work out that, so I'll call Ronnie tomorrow for my committee.